Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm calling the, I'm the, my name is Lucy Bisson, Chairperson of the Lewiston Planning Board, and I welcome you here this evening, and I call the meeting of the Planning Board for September 23rd to order, and I would ask Ms. Cox for a roll call, please.
My pleasure. Roger Dupree?
Here.
Mark Roy?
Here.
Michael Markot?
Present.
Shannon Cox, here. Alex Pine?
Here.
Amy Smith is absent?
Abs, I don't know.
Okay. And then we have Gemma.
Lucy.
Yes.
Present.
And then Jama Mohammed.
Here.
Thank you. Okay. I agree with staff.
That's okay. And for the record, city staff, we have John Connor, Director, Planning and Code Enforcement, Shelley Norton, Deputy Director, City Planner, Craig Tebow, City Planner, and Linda Tripp, Administrative Assistant. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? No problem.
There are not.
Okay, and there is a number of pieces of correspondence?
And let the record show that Amy Smith is now present.
So there are three broad items. The first is an updated traffic movement permit for the Five Memorial Avenue project. The only change over what you had received last week is that there's now a cost for the mitigation to be collected for the high crash location that's been provided. The second item is a group of five additional written comments from residents regarding 128 Farwell Street. And then the third item is an email from Mike Gatto of Stony Brook Land Use, who is the project representative for 128 Farwell Street. He provided an email, in an email, a memorandum from David Hediger, who is the former Director of Planning and Code Enforcement, which provided context at the time that the contract zone was adopted in 2023, which addressed some of the resident questions and concerns. So he wanted to remind us of what was written at that time.
Okay. All righty. All right, so we'll go on to public hearings. Public hearing one is John F. Murphy Holmes has submitted a development review application for the expansion of the existing school located at Five Memorial Drive. And Craig, would you give us your comments, please?
So this expansion will be a two-story addition with a 15,000 square foot footprint and a new two-story building with a 40,000 square foot footprint. This property is located on an approximately 21-acre parcel that is within the Highway Business Zoning District. A portion of it is also located within the Shoreland Zone Overlay District and a flood hazard area. The location currently operates as the Margaret Murphy Centers for Children and was approved by the Planning Board originally in May 2019. Academic institutions are allowed as a permitted use, and the development and lot meet all space and bulk requirements for the underlying zoning district. In total, the development, including the existing structure, will result in over 150,000 square feet of floor area and approximately 500 total parking spaces. This expansion is expected to generate 394 AM peak hour trips and 298 PM peak hour trips, and as such will require a traffic movement permit. The city has been granted delegated review authority for this permit from MDOT, and after review from MDOT, HNTB and the city, a draft traffic movement permit has been prepared for the board's review. This TMP approval has a separate set of conditions pertaining to traffic hazard mitigation. These are listed in full in the draft TMP but are referenced as one condition in the staff recommendation in this memo. The proposed total impervious area of approximately 8.5 acres will require approval through the Site Location of Development Act. The city does have delegated review authority from DEP. And additionally, a separate NRPA permit or an application to MDEP will be required specifically for the wetland impact of approximately 34,000 square feet of wetland impact. The applicant has already provided the city with a copy of this wetland permit, and so that's been an update to the staff review. That's no longer a condition of approval. This development is located within a general development area, which requires a setback of only 25 feet from the normal high water line for structures in the Shoreland Zone, therefore the stormwater features proposed by this development, which are closer than 75 feet are allowed. The Planning Board should review this development review application and take action using Article 13, Section 4 approval criteria. The board should also review the draft traffic movement permit for final approval. Staff have reviewed this proposal. We provide initial comments. Public works as well. Planning, sorry, police and fire had no concerns with the project. Staff are comfortable with the remaining comments being conditions of approval noted below. There should be six conditions of approval here in the updated memo that I provided. And you'll see a sample motion. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Craig, and does any, the sta, does people of the board have any questions of staff? Okay. In that case, would the applicant like to come up, introduce himself, and give us the information that we need, please?
My name is Mike Gatto. I'm here tonight to represent John F. Murphy Holmes. They can't be here tonight because they're all over New England at work-related things that they're dealing with. I guess really the staff report outlined a thing. I think we had a fairly complete application at this point, just to keep it short. I can just answer questions the board might have or wait until after public comment, whatever you prefer.
Okay. And the members of the board have any questions for Mr. Gatto at this time? Okay, then at this time, I will open it up to the public. The Planning Board has certain rules. If you wish to speak for or against this particular item or any item this evening, would you please step to the podium on the right, give your name and address, and you have three minutes for your comments. You are allowed to come up once. So I will open it up to the public, and I will ask anyone who has any comments, positive or negative, to please step up and make them known.
Can I ask a clear question?
Absolutely, Ms. Cox.
Any member of the public who wants to speak about this one would come up at this time, and if they were here for the second public comment?
They get another three minutes, yes. Yes, you get three minutes for each item on the agenda. So anyone wish to speak in favor or against the Memorial Drive item? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to the public, and I will bring it back to the board. And do any members of the board have any questions, comments that they wish to speak to? The board, yes, Mr. Pine?
So just for context on this, because I wasn't around when the decision was made on this, this school, this, the students at the school are special education students?
Yeah.
So, got it, okay. Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, per my usual comments of, you know, walkability, accessibility, but it seems like most of the students are going to be coming in on a bus or in a vehicle.
Yes, yeah. I don't think that that's really a consideration in this particular. I admire you for bringing it up on all other items, but for this particular item, this is just not an applicable topic. But thank you for bringing it up, Mr. Pine. Anyone else have any questions? Yes, Ms. Cox?
So any, any questions that we have around the impacto wetland are kind of negated by the fact that there's already a wetland permit in hand for you all?
We received that this morning.
Great. Okay, great. Any further comments?
Is, so for the wetland permit, is this sort of a, you know, removal and replace situation, so they're disturbing some wetlands and they're going to put them in on the rest of the site, like move them around, or is this just the ability to build? Like, just to have a little more clarity on that?
Well, there's approximately 34,000 square feet of wetland impacted by the existing and the proposed development. Beyond that, I mean typically with a tier, you know, we go by tier one, tier two, there's either some mitigation required, either in fees or some, some other means. I would have to defer to the applicant, to DEP, onto what those specifics, specific mitigation measures would be.
Mr. Gatto, would you like to address?
The application proposed to pay an impact fee as opposed to replacement or relocation or those kind of things. Used to be years ago, that's what you did, but if you want to do that today, your permit will be held up for a year or two. If you pay the impact fee, it goes away. So we're paying an impact fee of 180,037 and 44 cents for 34,000 square feet of impact.
Okay.
It's part of this project.
Right, okay, thank you. Are you satisfied?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Markot?
Question for staff. So what does that money get used for?
Go ahead, Mr. Gatto. You should just stay put.
It's out of their hands. It goes straight to the state.
It goes to the state, not the?
It goes to the state of Maine, and it's, it's used to purchase or to mitigate wetlands in other, other locations, some, some fund. I never have seen a project that's been done, but all the money they collect goes straight to the state treasury of Maine, and it's administered by DEP. Even the fee that Army Corps collects goes to the state of Maine.
So it might be used to replace that wetland someplace else?
It may be used to replace or restore a wetland. It may be used to preserve and buy, buy land to preserve a natural wetland feature. It's up to the state and how they spend it. We just have to write them a check.
I was also wondering, because there's a phase one and a phase two, are those going to be done simultaneously or sometime apart from each other?
We had noted in the application that we're going to build the addition, 15,000 square foot, 28 something square feet, 1,000 square feet, a total of two stories. We're going to build that addition first, move some students in there, rehab the building the students are in in Auburn, move the office to that, and then we're going to start construction of the freestanding building as phase two. Site work will probably be ongoing from the start of phase one to the end of phase two, because we're going to build the parking lot, because we need a large parking lot out there for the number of employees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, Ms. Cox?
You're going to get your steps in, otherwise. So I have a question about the parking. So it looks like you're anticipating 420 to 470 employees parking for 500 and 264, 84 students. I'm just thinking of, is there any way in which you are working out relationships with some of your neighbors for any expanded parking for if there was any events or parent-teacher conferences at the school where you'd have those 470 staff people there as well as even half of the 284 families?
It's, it's my understanding that they don't really have events, if you will. You don't have all the teachers and all the students and parents coming at the same time. They do individual meetings with the parents of the 284 students during the course of the year, maybe two or three times. So the John F. Murphy Holmes that I've done so far, I've done three of them, I think. They're looking for parking for the staff and immediate guests. You know, most of these students are bussed in, they get six hours of services during the day, the teacher or a teacher's aide or both are with them throughout the entire day, they're there. And, you know, there aren't basketball games or sports or anything like that that you might expect that you would typically see.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else have any questions? In that case, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make one.
Thank you.
From my highlighted updated version. I'd like to make a motion that the application submitted by JIG Investments LLC for the expansion of the existing school located at Five Memorial Avenue, including a two-story addition with a 15,600 square foot footprint and a new two-story building with a 40,580 square foot footprint, meets all of the necessary criteria contained in the zoning and land use code, including but not limited to Article 13, Section 4 approval criteria, and Section 15 post-construction stormwater management standards, and meets the requirements of Maine DOT Chapter 305 as amended for a traffic movement permit, and that approval be granted with the following conditions. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide an easement to the city for access to the eight-inch water main. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall record a post-construction stormwater management performance guarantee with a registry of deeds and provide the city with a copy for their records. This guarantee shall include annual stormwater management facility certifications. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the city shall receive approval for delegated review authority from DEP. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall pay any review fees to the city for the review of this traffic study and development of the traffic movement permit. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant's engineer shall certify that all improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plans, including but not limited to stormwater and utilities, pavements, plantings, and exterior building materials. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall meet all conditions enumerated in the traffic movement permit.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Roger, seconds. Any further discussion from members of the board?
I have a question.
Certainly, Michael.
I noticed when it got to recommendation number seven, that was from the one that was originally in the packet versus the one that we received tonight, was that one eliminated?
It's, it's, yes, number four was eliminated.
So in the update, they removed that?
So the updated is only six.
Okay, I thought you were reading from number seven, and I thought it was number seven.
No, 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 we're. It's number four because they've got the, okay, no problem.
They took it from the middle.
No problem. Okay. And no further discussions, then I'll call the roll. Oops, I'm sorry, Alex, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's all good. I just sort of realized, like, oh, we're dealing with more vehicle traffic here, and there was sort of talk of the mitigation cost. So I'm guessing that's sort of similar to the wetland mitigation fee that fee goes to Maine DOT, and then maybe it'll get spent on that section of Main Street, maybe it won't.
Yes, that's my understanding as well.
Okay.
Okay. All right. In that case, I will call the roll. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Mark Roy?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, gentlemen, and it's a beautiful campus, actually. I drove down this weekend, as I was nosy. Okay, the next public hearing is GRE LLC has submitted an application for development review for the creation of 208 apartments on 11 acres at 128 Farwell Street. Shelley?
This project is for nine new apartment buildings on a vacant parcel at 128 Farwell Street and 255 East Avenue. It would contain four, sorry, not, four, nine four-story buildings, and of those, five of them would have 16 units each, and four of them would have 32 units each. The parcel is currently contract zoned. The contract zone allows multifamily at a greater density than what they're proposing, which is a total of the 208 units. And the contract zone allows buildings up to 75 feet high, their buildings max out at 61 feet. Another feature of the contract zone is that it requires an additional 10 feet of front setback area along Farwell and an additional 15 feet along Charles Street that would be left either in a natural vegetated state or augmented with additional vegetation to provide visual enhancement and reduce views. This application has retained vegetation where their grading work allows and has added vegetation where they had to remove it or where plant materials don't exist currently. On Farwell Street, they have street trees with groupings of shrubs to break up the views, and then behind Charles Street, they've developed a mounded, a mound essentially along the property line that's about four feet high, it varies in height, to raise the plant materials up higher to reduce views. They have prepared renderings that you would have seen in your packet, which we can also show, that show what those plant materials will look like about five years after planting. The project is intended to be phased in three phases where they will build the nine buildings plus the community center and the other features on site. Two new access roads will be created, one off of Charles Street and one off of Farwell Street. Regarding the estimates for traffic, the largest peak estimate is for 81 trips in a peak hour in the evening, and because the project does not hit 100 trips in a peak hour, it's typically does not require a traffic movement permit. I do want to point out that when the city was considering the contract zone, which was developed last year in 2023 for this site, there was a lot of comment from existing residents that had concerns with traffic in the area and concerns with traffic related to Farwell School. So the city did have a traffic analysis done by HNTB to review those existing conditions in the neighborhood and to look at potential impacts. It wasn't a project-specific study because at that time, we didn't know how many units might be built. They estimated on a high end, which would have been 475 apartments. This is only 208, so it's not, you know, there's some information that isn't directly translatable. However, what has been really useful is the identification of existing concerns and conditions, and as a result, the city has been looking at that in the last year and working to correct some of those or improve those conditions. So there was in your packet a memo from city engineer Jeff Bowley that outlined those concerns the study raised, and then what the city or Maine DOT has done or has planned for those issues. So after I speak, our Public Works Director, Kevin Gagne, is available to answer questions about that. So as far as parking goes, we require 1.1 spaces for each dwelling unit, which would be 229 spaces. They've elected to put in additional spaces beyond that, so they have the required amount of parking. The new drive, sorry, the new roads within the project will all have sidewalks that connect to the street at Charles and also to the sidewalk on Farwell, and connect throughout the site to all of the buildings, the parking areas, the dog park, community building, and gazebos and patios that they have designed. So they do have a number of amenity features on site. Our current ordinance requires 50 square feet of outdoor amenity area per dwelling unit, and they exceed that by quite a lot because they do have a number of amenity features and open landscaping. The project has a couple, a small amount of wetland impact. It's actually below the threshold where they would need any permitting from DEP or from Army Corps because it's such a small amount of impact. It did trigger Site Location of Development Act review. Lewiston is delegated that review authority, so the city's environmental engineer has reviewed the project and finds that it meets the requirements. We do have a condition of approval, however, that are, when we do a delegated review, we have to notify DEP that we've received an application. So we're waiting for acknowledgement from them that they got our notification. So that is a suggested condition of approval. So items that the staff had for comments, just generally, we provided comments from fire about apparatus turning, which they satisfied fires' concerns. We had comments or questions about parking, landscaping, clarifying how much amenity space they were providing, a few of the utility details, stormwater calculations, and dumpster and snow storage locations. So at this time, staff concerns have been addressed, other than whatever is in the conditions of approval, which I'll discuss in just a moment. I also wanted to point out that in our legacy Lewiston comprehensive plan, this area is designated as a sector for growth, for housing and mixed-use developments, it was stated would be appropriate here. So providing housing in this location does align with the comprehensive plan. So staff suggestions for conditions, if you take action to approve tonight, would be that we get approval for delegated review authority for Site Development, Location of Development Act from DEP, that there be recordation at the registry of deeds of post-construction stormwater maintenance responsibilities prior to the issuance of a building permit, that access to the water shut-off valves be provided to the city of Lewiston at phase one and phase two occupancy permits, and then that the applicant's engineer was certified that all the improvements have been completed in accordance with the plans prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gagne, would you like to discuss Mr. Bowley's memorandum?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Kevin Gagne, Public Works Director for Lewiston. City engineer Jeff Bowley is tied up in another meeting, so I'll try to be brief and give some good feedback here. We did review the traffic movements report from HNTB. It was completed September 21st, 2023. Nearly all of the recommendations have either been completed or planned to be in the next two years through a number of different projects. I'd also like to point out that there are, full build was looked at this analysis, so 475 units were used in this analysis, while the plan is only for 208 units. So we're looking at 44% of the evaluated rate. There were six topics that came up. There were six topics that came up. Number one was incorporate signal timing and phasing adjustments at all intersections following the occupancy of the development, included Sabatys and Russell. Looking at that level of service, the effort also looked at recalculating different timings on clearance on the signals. HNTB is working with ATRC to complete this task now. The improvements have been made by the citywide to control all the signals through coordinated software and communication network. And the city electrical division is working to install improved detection on Sabatys and Russell. So we believe that need has been met or will be in the future. Item two is installing a signal backplates and retro reflective borders around the signals. This mitigates crashes by red light running and generally increases visibility of the signal indicators. Estimate was 3,000 per intersection. This was recently completed at the Webster-Farwell intersection, Webster and East, Sabatys and East, with the placement of signals as part of a state project. There are no immediate plans for Sabatys and Russell and East and Russell, but this could be done at a minimal cost. Item number three was ADA improvements at all intersections. Currently, all signalized intersections do not have full ADA compliance with pedestrian facilities. This includes curb ramps and push buttons. This was noted in the report. Conceptual estimate for this work is 40,000 per intersection, reconstruct curbs, install APS push buttons for all crossings. Our response from Public Works is these are all being completed as part of various MDOT projects. The APS push buttons and new PED signals were recently completed at Farwell and Webster, Webster and East, and Sabatys and East with the recent MDOT project. Plans are in '26 for East and Russell, and next year, Russell Street ADA improvements, Sabatys Street ADA improvements, and then in '26, East Ave and Sabatys ramps will be completed, all under MDOT projects with local share. Farwell and Webster Street ramps have been recently reconstructed under a local MPI project and new sidewalks and ADA for the rest of Farwell. Recommendation number four from the report was a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, or RRFB, at the mid-block school crossing, recommending for the Farwell School. This is around, estimated around $20,000. This was completed in August of this year, along with a raised crosswalk to reduce speeds. Item number five was eliminating left turns at the intersection with Russell and East for the northbound Russell Street approach onto East Avenue southbound. Move, this improvement would limit failing to yield properly. Estimate was $1,000 for signage. This is being looked at as part of an intersection safety upgrade with MDOT as part of our Safe Streets for All project that's ongoing, so we'll evaluate that and implement it as recommended. Item number six in the recommended report was install new video detection on Farwell Street and Webster Street intersection. Existing loop and video detection was found to be malfunctioning. Phases were in recall. They were saying it could be considered as mitigation. I'd like to say the electrical staff with consult, with our consultants have gone through and replaced this equipment along with our interconnections, so it is now working properly, and we don't have any issues with that concern. There are other areas of improvements that were not specifically in the recommendations but are also happening as part of Lewiston's work with DOT and other traffic improvements. Addition of a protected left signal phase on East Ave, on Webster at East, excuse me, in '24, that was completed. Conversion of East Ave to a three-lane section with two-way left turns, that's being looked at in '26. Replacement of curb and sidewalks on East Avenue with ADA upgrades, I've mentioned that, that's going to be done in '26. Installation of crosswalk with RRFBs on East Avenue at Home Field, that's planned in 2026. Installation of protected left turn laid signals on East Ave at Sabatys, that's planned in '26. And restriping the left turn on Sabatys onto connector for more stacking room, that was done in '23. So we have no further concerns with the traffic movements related to this project. We're here to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Gagne regarding traffic? Yes, Mr. Dupree?
Mr. Gagne, when the project was first presented to the board...
Mr. Dupree, can you use your microphone, please? Thank you, sir.
When the project was first presented to this board, the Charles Street access was going to be an emergency entrance and exit. What changed?
I do not know about the first phase of the project. We looked at the current phase as it's being presented tonight. I do know that...
Wouldn't that affect the amount of traffic in the traffic flow that you're talking about?
That was looked at in the study area, so I'll refer to HNTB and their report, but I do know that on the East Ave end of this project, it is very tight. There's stormwater issues there, and they're using that as stormwater detention. I think we've had concerns, I know DOT raises concerns with having multiple streets and driveways with close proximity to the East and Sabatys Street intersection, so that would be a concern.
Can I ask, and I'm sorry to interrupt, can I ask that staff puts this location in a maps overlay up? Because I know it's going to be really helpful even for this conversation, but certainly some of the comments that we'll hear. Please, sorry to interrupt.
Nope, go ahead.
Thank you, Shannon.
I keep looking at my phone, and it's a very small version of maps. May I ask a question, or would you like to, did you get the answer that you wanted? About the answer that you asked?
I still haven't got the answer, but waiting for that to come up.
Okay.
I think we need to ask the developer that question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Shannon.
Um, I guess I'm trying to make sense of, and I completely appreciate that you didn't write this memo, you weren't the one who did the traffic study, and still you're here at the podium, and still I'm going to ask, and so we'll do the best we can, but when we look at this general neighborhood, and when we heard from residents the first time that we had a discussion around this, is where traffic will be, humans have their own habits and behavior, but where traffic will largely be expected to be intersecting into which areas? And I think that some of what's named in the study, in fact, I think if I understood the study correctly, the study was based on almost twice the amount of density, not because we're aiming for that, but because we didn't have anything to aim for, so they just kind of maxed it out, right?
Correct.
And the, and that told us that it's fine, essentially, right? That's the very short version of a lot of papers. So just in terms of movement, based on what you just named around the tightness at, I think you said, East and Charles?
Correct.
And the hope or desire that the majority of traffic is not using that, but is somehow coming out Farwell to Webster, down to East, or is coming out Farwell and over to Sabatys, north-south, I don't know, but left out of this particular Charles Street intersection? Based on the application that you've seen here, the study that you saw, and the improvements that you're factoring in, that you've either done or are planning to do, what are you designing those improvements for? Where are you hoping to see that traffic pull, pull forward?
I think our overall goal for, for Public Works and for the city is to keep neighborhoods as neighborhoods. So considering the residents as part of this project accessing that neighborhood, minimizing cut-throughs through neighborhoods. I know we did some traffic calming with the elevated crosswalk at Farwell Street. We'd like truck, trucks to follow truck routes, and those are designated, and major arterials to be utilized by the traveling public. So with that in mind, we've implemented the recommendations that you see because we're trying to make sure and facilitate, coordinate and move it on our, on Russell Street, on East Avenue, so people are not trying to cut through a neighborhood because they're sitting at a light too long, right?
So a lot of the extra traffic, and I would guess I would say the non-neighborhood traffic that's using Farwell to get through, are folks probably coming from the interstate or Webster and are cutting through Farwell to get either over to Auburn or out Sabatys instead of coming all the way down Webster and following?
It's quite possible. I mean, if people aren't from the area, and depending on where, you know, their navigation apps are sending them.
Yeah.
I think generally if somebody's from a neighbor, from the area, and they know they can get through a cut-through, whether it's through Bates College or through this neighborhood, then people tend to take that shortcut. But we've got a lot of different movements where we're trying to facilitate and maximize flow on our major streets. So we'd hope that people would choose East Avenue and Russell Street and not take a detour or a cut-through.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have any questions or comments for Mr. Gagne? Yes, Mr. Pine?
So, um, for, you know, I noticed you talk, talking about some of the traffic calming methods that the study looked at. Were any more like drastic measures, like, like sort of like a chicane or something that's actually going to impede the flow of traffic and really slow it down physically? Considered as part of the traffic study, or is that, you know, I've typically seen approaches like that where we're, you know, either making it so that, you know, bicycle and pedestrian traffic can, can make it through on a street, but vehicle traffic has to take an alternate route? Or, you know, putting basically a planter, making an intersection into a small traffic circle to really slow down traffic? Those, those aren't things I typically see here in Maine, but I've seen them, you know, in other cities and other regions. Is that something that our consultants considered and looked at when they were doing the, the traffic study, or?
I think they looked at the overall area. They found kind of the low-hanging fruit, that our systems and our signals and really get them modernized and up-to-date and functioning. There were no other kind of indicators to say that the street needed to be, have more traffic calming or road diet. We are considering them in other areas, around Bates College, around different school zones, middle school. I, I think that we've, we've had some elevated crosswalks in the past. The expectations were different. So, you know, we've got examples in Auburn, we've got examples in Portland, where we, the Farwell Street elevated crosswalk just went in. I think we're going to see how that works. So far, it's, I think it's working, I think it's working well. I know some people aren't happy with it, but I think that we're trying to protect pedestrians in that, in that area. So, you know, I've heard a bunch of different things, you know, on-street parking is an issue, so depending on what, you know, what's going on on Charles Street or some of the other side streets, we really try to make sure that we consider winter operations, noise to the public. So really, we're trying to treat neighborhoods as neighborhoods. So if it ends up being that a recommendation or further evaluation needs to be done, we can look at that.
Yeah, because something I wonder about, you know, I've never, I don't drive down this street when I'm coming into town from that direction. I usually, you know, stay on East Ave, stay on the busier streets, but I've ridden it on a bicycle many times, and something I wonder about, you know, to what you're saying of keeping neighborhoods neighborhoods is, you know, how much utility is there in being able to pass through the neighborhood on that street? And, you know, if you made it impossible to pass through, that could solve, that would eliminate any, uh, anyone trying to cut through the neighborhood, but it's a pretty drastic measure.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Markant, please use your microphone.
Probably we haven't looked at it yet tonight, but some of the sketches, drawings, maps, the ones that demonstrate how many units are in each building. I don't know if I'm correct in saying that the ingress egress on Charles versus Farwell would be about 25% of the entire development. I was trying to do some quick math here. It looked like a 32-unit apartment building and a 16 for a total 48 into 208 would be slightly less than 25%.
Well, actually, it's, it's 216 and a 32.
It's 216 total?
And a 32.
And a 32.
If you made the assumption that these three are coming through Charles and not...
And everybody else?
Yeah, that was the assumption I was making, so how many units in here? Oh, I missed that one, I think.
That'd be 64?
Yeah, 64.
64, so approximately 33%. No. I, I just wanted to clarify that the occupants are probably going to take the shortest route from their unit to a main road, and the heavier congestion will be on Farwell, then on Charles.
Yeah, well, we can discuss that with the applicant.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good to bring it up, yeah, absolutely. Anything else for Mr. Gagne? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, um, Ms. Norton, is there anything else that the staff wishes to say? Okay, in that case, I would ask the applicant to come up, identify himself, and...
Can I ask a question of Shelley before Mike speaks?
Yep, certainly.
But please do sit, Mike. Can you remind us of the contracted zones uses as approved previously?
Um, so multifamily was allowed. There were a couple of other commercial uses, I don't remember specifically, but they were allowed as accessory to a multifamily use. And then other residential uses, like single-family and so forth, were allowed. If you want me to pull up the contract zone with the list of uses, we can do that.
It'd be handy to have it referenced after we hear from the applicant.
Okay, yeah, it is in the packet. We just have to get to that page.
If you can tell me what page, I'll find it.
Isn't it in the new, isn't it in the what you gave us this evening?
No.
That's not it, okay.
It's in this, yes.
Yeah, it is in the packet from the applicant. I don't think it's too far back, so if you go, you know, kind of where the application is, somewhere a little after that.
Where the deeds are.
Yeah, okay.
It's part of the deed ownership stuff.
Thanks.
Is that a good place to start with for you?
You'd be better to have the old one. Sheet one. I think you want sheet, yeah, that one, yeah. Thank you. Hopefully I can work that thing. Good evening, my name is Mike Gatto. I'm here with Dave Jenren. Hopefully Noah Jenren will join us soon. He's traveling from Massachusetts, working today. I'm not sure exactly where to start with all the questions and comments, but I guess I'm going to be here a little bit longer tonight. And I guess I want to try to make sure that we get some background and consensus of where we had and why we did or have done what we need to do. I started this project with Dave back in 2017, and we have just basic information of a boundary and a existing condition in wetlands that were done back in 2017. City staff said that before we did any planning, they would like us to have a neighborhood meeting. We had a neighborhood meeting in August 7th of 2018. 30 to 35 people showed up, had a good discussion, didn't really have anything to tell them of what we were going to do, but wanted to have their input of concerns, and certainly their concerns of traffic and development in the backyard, and all that stuff was heard, and they're here and they've been here and active through the process. In '22, the council decided they were going to rezone this as part of an overall Sabatys corridor. That failed again because neighbors concerned in traffic. I was extremely happy to find that the council, after that failure, hired HNDB to see what the traffic issues were. The neighbors were complaining about traffic and have been complaining about traffic, but nobody knew if there really was any problems or not. Well, HNB, HNTB did a study, and in fact, there are a lot of issues out there at the time. They designed it for 200 maximum trips because of the size of a traffic movement permit, which went into 475 units, because we were looking at a contract zone that would allow us to do 321 units, is what the contract zone allowed for. So we were trying to be proactive, we were trying to find out what was wrong with the, with the traffic system so that it could be fixed. And as you can tell from Kevin's report and Jeff's, the city has taken control of that stuff, and they are working on that stuff, and in a couple of years, it'll be done. There were, there was a planning board meeting, well, we started the contract zoning in August of '23, and there was a planning board meeting on the 23rd, I'm sorry, in September where of 2023, where the planning board voted 7-0 to pass it on to the council, the contract zone. There was a lot of comments about traffic and concerns about traffic, even though at that point, we had the HNDP study, there still was a lot of concerns. And certainly, we talked about, at the planning board meeting... And certainly, we talked about, at the planning board meeting, because I was there and I spoke, and I was there at the first council meeting and I spoke. We talked about all options at Charles Street, I think, in my recollection. And we talked about the fact of no access, we talked about pedestrian access, we talked about emergency access, we talked about other possibilities. I wanted you folks to have the staff memo that went to the council after your meeting, because it talked about the traffic. And the one comment that I wanted to bring back, and this is what I remember and apparently others may remember it different, is on page four, where it says that the applicant, however, did not want to limit their ability to use access point for Charles Street. And I wanted everybody to know that, because I was fighting with staff, and I was consistent that we would look at every option. Our preference was not to use Charles Street, but if we had to, I needed to have that option to make the project work. I've been doing this for 44-plus years, and you don't know what you don't know until you know it. So I thought we were clear that we would do the best we could on Charles Street and we wouldn't use it if we couldn't, we didn't need to. So we left a contract zoning with the city council and with the planning board, and it was approved with no restriction on access to Charles Street, which is what I would hope for. So from there, I started doing schematic designs. I did several schematic designs and full design processes on this project, but we also did some additional studies. The original wetlands were over five years old, so we had to remap the wetlands, so we hired somebody to do wetlands. And we also hired the traffic engineer to be, do a specific site assessment for this project, because we didn't need a full traffic movement permit, but we needed a traffic assessment. And so we sent them out with a schematic that showed an access on East Avenue and an access on Farwell Street across from Goulet Street. So these are the entrances we want to use, can we make these work? And if you read the traffic report, you'll find that they came back and said that those two locations were, East Avenue being the worst, and Farwell Street across from Goulet being the third, you know, the third worst. The issues were site distance related on Farwell, minor trees on abutting land that didn't really give a good enough distance. And also, the idea that there could be stacking on Farwell. I think the neighbors have said that Farwell will stack at times back to Charles Street. Hopefully, the intersection changes, the city has made, is gonna fix that. We won't know until time comes. East Avenue failed site distance, would require us to do grading on an abutters lot and to get the site distance that we needed. East Avenue also was blocked by the queuing of the light at Sabatys. And East Avenue had a conflict with the Irving Station and Charles Street. So there's conflicting movements, and they were very close, and everybody's coming in and out, and it creates conflicts. East Avenue's also a high-crash location. So the city is fixing the high-crash location by going to a three-way section. That's going to increase the stacking. It's, that's just the way it's gonna work. Take less, you take lanes away, you increase, you know, you increase the stacking. Traffic's engineers' report came back saying the best location for access from transportation planning is on the minor street, not on the arterials. Nobody in this room wants to hear that, but that's, that's the best that you look at. So we put our entrance on Charles Street and our bigger entrance on Farwell, hoping that most people will use the Farwell entrance. But certainly, first phase, 64 units, about 32 peak hour trips are gonna go in and out of Charles Street. And the traffic's, people have told me that we got 81 trips, that's 49 entering the site and 32 exiting the site. And coincidence being that Phase 1 would have a peak hour of 32 trips. Okay, so. So Farwell Street, from a traffic's perspective, I mean, sorry, said used Charles Street. Also, the wetland mapping came back, and unlike the first mapping, they had one vernal pool that was man-made up in the center of the site here. I don't know if I can, these bold lines right here, sorry, it's a little bit slow, is a vernal pool, man-made vernal pool. And this right here is a man-made vernal pool. And the hatch and the cross grass around it is wetland as around here. So the vernal pools, man-made, are not regulated by DEP. Army Corps, the vernal pools, in their minds, are more important than human life itself. Okay? I'm sorry, my age is showing. I don't do wetland permitting anymore, because I can't, it's difficult. Okay? So they require you to show that there are absolutely no alternatives to be able to get a permit. Our wetland consultant, Flycatcher, who I hired, because they're very good at what they do, said there was no way that we would get ability to cross that wetland with a street, as we had proposed, to access East Avenue. And traffic is saying. So traffic, wetland environmental issues, we put entrance on Charles Street so that we would have two entrances. Not because we want to, but because your regulations, federal regulations and state regulations, won't allow us to go to the other. We have to have a safe access. And so that's why we ended up on Charles Street. So the other thing that we had to do with this site is that we're grading 9.95 acres of an 11-acre site, so that we can make stormwater work. Another regulation. Today, these projects are not designed by my client or us, they're designed by the regulations and what you have to do to meet those regulations. So we are presenting to you what we believe and what staff has said meets all of your requirements. Yes, the neighborhood's gonna be concerned tonight, and we'll try to address their concerns as best we can that are related to the regulations that we can deal with. So with that, I'm happy to go through the project. As you can see out here, we have, we have nine buildings, the smaller buildings are 16 units. We have bigger buildings that are 32 units. They're all four-story buildings with elevators. If everything goes well, they'll all have balconies so that they can see, and there'll be the amenities. We have a proposed clubhouse, and we have a patio, and we have a dog park here and a dog park over here. We have more parking than we need for the apartment complex, because we think the market is gonna be closer to one and a half spaces than 1.1. So we have parking to serve what our needs are. We have plans that show Landscape Mound along this edge of these Charles Street neighborhood, and along this edge, we have left the vegetation and the wetland areas intact. So we are only altering about 1,025 square feet of wetland up here to recreate the old outlet of this man-made pool. It's a six-inch clay pipe, we have to recreate that, fill it in, and we also have some temporary impacts of a couple hundred square feet to get our utilities from East Avenue into the site. We're splitting the utilities, sewer going to Farwell for, goes to Farwell for all these, these buildings over here, all six, and these three here go out, sewer out here, stormwater goes out to East Avenue from the pond there, and it also goes out on the other side to Farwell. We recently went into Farwell Street and replaced the catch basin and went out into the center of the street, so that we could get a stormwater system deep enough so we could make the stormwater work. We're gonna have to do the same thing on, on East Avenue, so we can get to the deepest part of the stormwater system, so that we can drain the stuff, so it's treated as it goes out of the thing. I think with that, that's a, that's a quick overview. I can show you the renderings if you think that will help.
Can you, Mr. Gatto, could you explain which is, you've got three phases, correct?
Yep.
So can you tell me which buildings are gonna be, you know, what's Phase 1, what's Phase 2, what's Phase 3?
Phase 1...
And could you do it with the rendering, since you just offered?
What's that?
Could you do it with the rendering, since you just offered?
Well, we'll see if I can.
Thanks.
We gotta find that right file, okay? I'm gonna minimize that.
I just think as we're talking about...
Maybe I didn't.
...visual integration into the neighborhood, it's helpful to see...
Did you give us the first overview?
Some of these types of images, Shelley, if that's useful.
At least I think it was, it's slow, isn't it?
Renderings combined.
Hard to get a sense of the berm in some of the top view. Those are full porches, too. What's the word for the Juliet porches that aren't...
Juliet balconies.
Nice air, but no feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, right. It's just open the door and, and don't go over the fence.
It's that. It's that. We see a lot of those.
That, that, first step is a doozy.
It's a winter type rendering.
So these are prepared by Pepper Chrome. We got 14 or 18 of them, something like that, views that were in the application. This happens to be an overview of the site from the south looking north at the Charles Street entrance. There was a question earlier, I probably can't find my note, about what, where that entrance is, and it is between 34 and 42 Charles Street. It's a 50-foot strip that came with the property. So that's just one picture. Let's see if we can get over here and... Oh, wow, we skipped.
[laughing]
That's not what it was supposed to do. Oh, they're out of order. Nope, they're out of order. All right, I'm gonna wing it. This is the Farwell Street entrance. This is back at the Charles Street entrance beyond the homes, looking at a gazebo, and first-phase 32-unit building is in the center. And this landscaping is shown roughly with a five-year growth. I mean, all plants grow differently, depending on sight, sunlight and other factors, but these plants are five years from planting. This is going farther in from the Charles Street and looking at the 216-unit buildings. This is, again, continuing around the access and looking at the community building and the 32-unit building. So if you were to come around and go through the parking lots and come back out through, I guess these might be in order now that I remember it. This is looking down along the edge of the Lewis and Housing Authority property in our access drive, looking at a 32-unit building, a 16 beyond, and a 16 at the end of the site. There's a community area with a couple covered patio picnic areas and potential place for guiding or lawn activities in between the 32-unit and the 16-unit. I don't have a plan to tell you those unit numbers, but that's a community area that we put in. This is across from the Lewis and Housing site. This is another view of that community area, looking at the units on the other side of the site, towards Charles Street. Back at the corner, looking back along the Lewis and Housing Authority at the three buildings that we were talking about, and there's one behind. There's a, this is the gazebo that we saw at the Charles Street entrance, looking at the buildings in Phase 2, the 32-unit, actually on the left, behind the dumpster area is in Phase 1, and the other two are the end of the 32-units in Phase 2. Hey, there we go. That's what I was expecting to see. Here's another overview of the site. We just came in this entrance, went around, went back around to here, and then we skipped over to this gazebo and looked at that.
Mike, can you stay on that for a second?
Yep.
Is this the slide that you could answer Lucy's original question by pointing out, with these buildings, which buildings are in which phase?
Okay, I forgot the question, thank you.
Okay, I'm here for you. Now that we can see them all, this is a really good opportunity to answer that question. You're welcome.
16-unit here, 1, 16-unit 2, and 32-unit is 3. And I think I laid out Phase 2 as these two, and Phase, Phase, actually, it might have been these two as Phase 2, and these four as Phase 3. So in other words, we get this driveway going in to connect.
So would the roadways not be created all at once?
No, they would not.
So the Charles Street entrance would be the first and only...
For the 64 units, the Charles Street would be the only entrance for those 64 units, that is correct.
Until you begin finished Phase 2.
Absolutely committed to be senior 55-plus, not, not senior, 55-plus. We think we got, you know, people in this market that can afford it, we just don't know if we have 208 parties that can afford 55-plus and stay here. And we hope, the intent is 55-plus, but I did leave flexibility in our application, and we designed it for a multifamily building. If we can't fill all the buildings, say we can't fill the last two or something, that we could potentially rent it to somebody else. You can't build a building and not have it rented. So that we would, you know, we would do that only if we needed to. These are market rate rents.
And they're one and two-bedroom?
One and two-bedroom.
Two is max?
Two is max.
Okay.
What we're finding, or what I'm finding and what I'm talking to people about in the clients that we've done these type of buildings with, is that we're getting a lot of import of people who work from home remotely, from all over the country, are getting a two-bedroom unit, single person, they can use one for their office and one for the bedroom, and they work from home, and they're able to enjoy Maine, so that's the market. Also, there are nurses and teachers and other people that come in for short periods of time, those kind of people would be people we would consider renting to. So, so hopefully that did the phases for you. We have a berm here, as Shelley said, and you can see the existing trees, and those existing trees were picked from Google Image as best we could, but minimized. We didn't show all the trees that we could see. We were just trying to get an overview of the project, just so that people could get a sense. The buildings aren't completely designed yet, we're still working on those, but they're coming out very close to what we're trying to show here. I think I got a couple more here that I can show you from different perspectives. Here's another perspective, looking at it from Farwell Street. Nope, error.
That's it. That's the summary of my...
That's what happens when you let me in charge of a computer.
Okay. Anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Gatto or Mr. Pine? You look like you have a question.
Yeah, trying, trying to figure out how to, how to say this in a way that makes sense, so I don't get rambly too much. But, you know, I think looking, you know, at the site, it is challenging, like you were saying, to find ways to get people out of the site in vehicles, right? And I think... of the site in vehicles, right? Um, and I think, you know, one of the things that adds to that challenge is that the most feasible ways to do that are oriented back towards the neighborhood, not towards sort of major streets where people are going to be, you know, going off for shopping or for jobs, or, you know, for whatever reason, they're leaving the site, right? A lot of the entrance and exit areas are oriented back away from Sabados, back away from East. Um, and looking at this aerial view that I have here, something I wonder about is, um, you know, I think, I, I hear what you were saying about the challenges in connecting with East Avenue and that being unfeasible. You know, a, a lot of the lots that are abutting the property are also fairly large, so you can't, you know, get a little, you know, easement through their fully development, developed. One thing I, I was wondering about is, um, and I have the street name here, but there's just, I know it's a public right of way, a little elbow of a street that goes into the Lewiston Housing Authority development.
Spofford.
Okay.
It's, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, yeah, I didn't see it on this one.
No, it's fine.
But, um, one thing I do wonder about, you know, you, there is a lot of space on the property, on this development for parking, if there would be a way to basically trade parking, a parking easement for an easement onto their property to connect to that street up through the north.
Their property being Lewiston Housing Authority?
Yeah.
We talked a little bit with the Lewiston Housing Authority, and they were interested in doing a joint venture of, you know, Section Eight or whatever their affordable housing projects are.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we decided that i- it was not what we wanted to do. We, we told people it was gonna be market rate fifty-five plus, and so that's where we headed. We also looked at the opportunity to try to buy two or three homes on Spofford to give us frontage. We couldn't do that.
Got it.
So we talked, we didn't get where we needed to be to move that forward.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, at this time, before we open it up to the public, I'm going to call for a five-minute recess break, so that we can have a, because once we get into the con, the conversations, I don't want to interrupt anyone who wants to speak. So, we need a bathroom break, so, if, if you'll excuse us. So we'll take five minutes, and we'll be, we'll be back. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, please, if everyone would take their seats. All right, since there are no comments or questions from the board to the applicant, I'm going to, yes, Shelley, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Um, I just wanted to point out that we do have the rest of the renderings up. We can show them up on the screen before we go into public comment, if you want to.
Okay, if you want to do that, why don't you do that, and then we'll go into, uh, public comment.
I do have one additional question for the applicant.
Okay. Uh, while you're bringing up the renderings, Mr. Pine has a question for the applicant.
Are you putting mechanical in the peaked roofs, or is that purely for aesthetics?
No, the peak roof is gonna, is supposedly a peak roof. The, uh, mechanicals, I think, are gonna be either on the porches or on the ground.
Got it, okay.
Um, this screen seven is, uh, from the backyard of fifty Charles Street. And this one should be from the backyard of fifty-four Charles Street. And that one is from the backyard of sixty Charles Street.
You found your cheat sheet.
I did.
Okay.
The ability to, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Cheat sheet meant like the footnote, so that he could reference which image went from which property and not be relying on memory?
Yeah.
Right.
Not rely on that.
There's no actual cheating, I just...
No, no, there's no actual cheating involved, no, no. Okay, so I will remind everyone, I'm going to open it up to the public. Please step to the podium, give your name and address, and you will have three minutes to, uh, give your, uh, comments, uh, ask your questions. There is a three-minute, uh, monitor, so, um, Mr. Connor?
Well, it, it, it shows up on the screen, so, uh, you will know how long you have to speak. So at this time, I will open it up to the public.
Can I make one additional note?
Yes, please.
For new folks, which is, um, we nor the applicant are able to answer your questions. So should you use your three minutes to ask a bunch of questions, it's not a good use of your time, nor are we really supposed to answer questions point by point, nor should the applicant during the questions. And so we do make notes and try to reference that after the public comment period is closed, but if you aren't aware of that, you might just think we're obstinate, and we're not, just following procedure.
Okay. All right, at this time, if anyone wishes to speak for or against the project, would you please step up to the podium and state your name, your address, and give your comments? You have three minutes. Going, going, please step up. You can line up if you like, so that you're all ready to go. Yes?
That's great.
Yeah, line up, so that one person can speak after the other. Okay, go.
My name is Michael Bell. I live at fifty Charles Street, and, uh, thanks for the picture of the view from fifty Charles Street. Uh, I wish I could ask questions, because really that's what I have, are questions. Um, and so...
You can ask, just no answers.
You can ask, yeah, just you won't get any answer right away. We'll give you the answers after, okay?
Okay. When I, when I look at the placement of the berm, for example, um, I understand why it's being put there, and it's supposed to put there to block views and whatnot, and I get that. Um, but I'm, my biggest concern with that berm is the potential runoff from it. I currently get a lot of runoff in that, in the corner of my property, or actually, it's not my property, it's actually Mr. Gendron's property, where it puddles every spring. And my concern is if the increase in water gets, or if the water increases, it potentially could interfere with potentially putting water in my basement or whatever. That's one of my questions. The other question I have is, how tall are the lights gonna be in the parking lots? Uh, since behind fifty Charles Street, there's gonna be a parking lot right there. Um, and let's see. And, uh, the other question I have is, what is, what is the criteria that allows city government to make the decisions for the main Department of Environmental Protection? What's that? How does that mechanism work, or what types of things cause that to be, to come into play? And as far as the berms go, granted, it'll take some time for the, uh, greenery to grow. Is there something that can be done? Cause I'm, I'm anticipating a lot of headlights in my backyard, in my house, in my bedroom, and so on, for at least a period of time, till they grow, but that's it.
Thank you.
David Adler, fifty-four Charles Street. We're, we're not here as residents to try to stop Mr. Gendron from building his property. It's his, he can build whatever he wants. What we need is something that fits our neighborhood. Add in fifty percent more cars on Charles Street, which is an absolute nightmare these days, even though you guys said you did a study. You don't live there. I've been there twenty-two years, and that traffic is way more than you think it is. Your city council members have gone and watched and actually drove Farwell Street and said, what a nightmare. Again, I'm not trying to stop the project. Project's gonna go in whether I want it or not. It's whether I stay or move, that's my choice. The water problem is the same as Mr. Bell's, the light problems are the same as Mr. Bell's. All of us on that side of the street, we're gonna have the same problem. The original onset, as the developer said, they were gonna use the emergency entrance on Charles Street as exactly that. I understand the East Avenue issue. I don't believe the planning board did its due diligence. I can tell you, the city council just passed it on through, regardless of what we had to say. And I won't say the city council's name, but he kept sitting up there, and he never once came to take a look at the neighborhood, never. He didn't care. And that's the feeling I get from the administration of the city of Lewiston. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Roy, ninety-five Charles Street. Um, I've been there twenty-eight years. I'd like to challenge all of you that are sitting up there right now to actually go there to Farwell Street in peak times to watch the traffic before you make this vote. I work a second job. When I go to my second job, I sit through three lights already. Now, that's not adding the cars that are gonna be added to Farwell Street. Um, I feel that if you were there looking at this, the last council, before I was put on the council back in twenty-three, there were two members of the council that did that and voted this project down because of the amount of traffic that this was gonna cause, the additional traffic. The other thing is, is I think right now, um, Charles Street is a speedway, it's a cut-through. Um, I believe that if you add more traffic to that cut-through, the, the people on that street are just, they're never, it's not gonna be a calm neighborhood street. What happened to being a good neighbor? Good neighbors talk to their neighbors and make sure that whenever you do anything with your property, or you try to, you know, you try to be a good neighbor with your, your, the people that surround you, and right now, I don't think that's being done here. Um, I don't think these people that are sitting here were really considered how this would impact them and their property values and everything like that. Like I said, I've been there twenty-eight years, that's half of, more than half of my life. And now, I mean, I'm not against housing, don't get me wrong, but what I'm against is adding all the traffic that's gonna be there. We have a school, if this isn't fifty-five plus, we have a school that has two hundred extra children in it right now at Farwell School. When you add more to that, we can't, we can't, we can't absorb that in the school system at that elementary school. So I beg you, please, before you make this vote, I know you've gotta do it tonight, maybe push it, go look at the traffic. The studies have been done, but I don't think that it's, it's fair. These people wouldn't be here if this was all sunshine and rainbows. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kristen Cludier, I live at thirty-three Charles Street. Um, so first off, I want to say that I truly understand the need for more housing. Uh, we have been in a housing crisis for a long time with no real end in sight, um, and several members of this board know that much of my own public service work has focused on ways to alleviate that. Uh, I also want to say that I arrived here tonight with an open mind, and I am blown away by what is being presented, and unfortunately, not in a good way. Um, and I also just want to clarify that the entire council last year did not support a second entrance on Charles Street. Uh, one of them has actually texted me while I was sitting here tonight to ask that I clarify that. Um, I live across the street from where this, uh, project is proposed. The buildings themselves will not affect my property much. What concerns me is the way the proposed access road on Charles Street will affect the young families that recently moved onto our street. Uh, families similar to mine when we first moved there in two thousand nine with small children and pets, moms and dads walking their kids to Farwell in the morning, walking school buses like the one my family utilized when we couldn't get our daughter to school ourselves, kids riding their bikes home after school, families walking their dogs in the early evening. I appreciate that a traffic study was conducted over a year ago. Uh, I would ask that it be reexamined. As folks have talked here about traffic on Farwell Street, I would say that the traffic on East Avenue has been so backed up in the mornings that I have had to go down Charles, up Farwell, and down Webster to East Avenue to catch the light, just to bring my, my daughter to Lewiston High School. Um, and that is quicker than trying to wait at the intersection of Charles and East Avenue, where we would take our lives in our hands, given the speed of traffic, uh, coming up East Avenue. As Mr. Gatto has said, this is the third time this project has been proposed. Two thousand eighteen was the last time a community meeting was held to be in communication with the neighbors. And with all due respect, it feels a bit to me, and I'm guessing to my neighbors, that the city is just going to keep trying until the residents of Charles Street get tired, and you find a supportive planning board and council. I have heard about many longtime residents moving out of Lewiston. This came as a shock to me, until I started going door to door recently, speaking to my constituents, it is a reelection year, uh, and I've heard that many of my neighbors and folks across the district have consistently expressed that they do not feel supported or respected as residents by the folks in City Hall, and I think my neighbor just expressed that himself. Uh, here tonight, we have heard the practice of neighbors expressing their concerns as complaining. I have very good neighbors, and we don't always... I have very good neighbors, and we don't always agree, and mostly, we keep to ourselves. But we all know that we can rely on each other if and when times get tough.
Thank you.
Those are the people that I want to share space with, and I worry that not being responsive to their concerns will lead to more people leaving Lewiston. And then I ask you, where will the city be?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Janice Dwyanel. I own property at 96 Charles Street. I'm standing here tonight to discuss the facts. The citizens of Lewiston have been misled. The development was labeled a 55-plus housing project. This site was purchased by GRE LLC in its own NCA, Neighborhood Conservation, which allows limited residential uses and very few commercial uses. The description of the NCA zone states that this zone requires new buildings to match the density and type of housing in the surrounding area. Shelley Norton's cover letter in the planning board proposes and states, the project is intended to be developed as a 55-plus community with market rate apartments. However, if tenants of that age can't be found, the units would be open to younger tenants. And to add to the burden, let's throw the mixed commercial use in there. Here are some of the contract zone uses that can be permitted in the zone. Business and professional offices, restaurants, neighborhood retail stores, hotels, motels, inns, medical clinics, academic institution, dormitories, athletic facilities, fitness and recreational sports centers. The city of Auburn is not building these large apartment buildings within residential neighborhoods like this smack in the middle of school zones. They are clustering them around business zones with major road access, not small residential streets in school zones. The parking in there, one parking per unit. You're telling me there's going to be one adult in there? You're going to tell these tenants they have one parking space? There are going to be two adults in each of these. You do the math. The tenants will be struggling there with onsite parking, especially during the winter months, when the developers push snow all around in the backyards of some of these people, and they can remove it at their discretion. On top of the possibility of adding mixed commercial uses, these tenants are going to be scrambling to find parking spaces, and they're going to park on the side streets. And the word children never came up. So you're telling me that when you start building two-unit, two bedrooms, that children are not going to go in there? There are going to be 100 units, maximum, minimum, I don't know, with two bedrooms. So now you're going to have hundreds of kids living in there, no play areas, and they're going to all pile out on Charles Street and ride their bikes and get hit by cars. There's no sidewalks. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good evening. Chris Adler. I live at 54 Charles Street. Kind of a question regarding the berm. Can there be a little bit of discussion about the proposed easement for the residents that back up to that berm and the width of the berm, the height again? And will there be any fencing, or is it just going to be a barrier that people can just kind of walk through anyway? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Steven Shaver. I live at 23 Columbia Street. If I understood correctly, in Phase 1, the only entrance will be off of Charles Street, if I heard correctly? Well, that means that all of the construction vehicles, the heavy trucks, the earth movers, all of that equipment is going to be having to go down Charles Street to enter the site. I have a real concern about that part of it. Like a lot of people, I understand the need for additional housing, but the current infrastructure simply doesn't support this volume of traffic. I was trying to follow some of the improvements Mr. Gangney was mentioning with regard to East Ave. With one lane going south, if anybody turning left brings the traffic to a standstill. Trying to turn left out of the side streets is already almost impossible, and the additional traffic just will make it that much worse. So I, I do rise in opposition to this project based on the traffic. I also want to say that from a pedestrian point of view, you know, we walk in the neighborhood, trying to cross Farwell Street right now is almost impossible. There are crosswalks, sometimes people stop, sometimes they don't. Sometimes one lane stops and the other doesn't. So there need to be significant improvements with regards to both pedestrian and vehicle traffic. I just don't think this is the place for this development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth Almquist. I own property at 19 Charles Street. As an 18-year resident and also an employee of the city of Lewiston, I have seen things that have gone wrong and much that has gone right in our city. Charles Street represents something that has gone very right. When people ask me where they live, they often say, Charles Street, what a lovely neighborhood, and they are so right. But we are more than a tree-lined street with gardens and flower beds tended with care. Here, we have working families, retirees, new mayors, and the disabled have all found a refuge on our street. I do welcome an expansion of this community. But sacrificing that feeling of refuge ruins a large part of what we love about it and what our new neighbors would come to love as well. Specifically, I do ask you to reconsider the Charles Street entrance. According to pages 162 to 164 of the packet you receive, you have adequate options besides Charles Street for a second entrance. I do not know if it is a possibility to have both of your entrance exits on Farwell Street, using both the north and the south entrances listed on the maps and diagrams that you have. Both Farwell Street options well exceed the minimum site distance of 200 feet. While the Charles Street entrance may have longer sightlines, the increased traffic puts pedestrians at greater risk, especially since Charles has no sidewalks and Farwell does. All the improvements that have been mentioned have been on Farwell, nothing on Charles. On page 128, number five, the response to ordinance requirement states that this project will not cause unreasonable congestion or unsafe conditions on any existing roads. With the increase in housing, this cannot possibly be true, especially with a busy entrance emptying traffic onto a pedestrian-heavy street with no options for pedestrians besides walking in the street. Relocating both entrances to Farwell would maintain safety not only for the existing neighborhood, but for our new neighbors in this development as well. Along with us, they would be able to appreciate the refuge that is Charles Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Anne Odom. I live in 39 Charles Street.
Could you repeat your name, please?
Anne Odom.
Thank you.
I just want to throw some numbers out there. You're talking about 64 units in Phase 1, is my understanding. So if you say one and a half of them, half of them are going to have two cars. You're talking about 96 vehicles coming out of that street, onto Charles Street every day. Now, say what you want, people work at home, whatever, people live their houses. They go to the grocery store, they do whatever they want, they're going to have to come out on Charles Street. Also, the second phase, is my understanding, is going to be next to that. Those people are going to come out on Charles Street also, because Phase 3 is going to be all construction, and they're not going to go out that road. So you're talking a lot of cars coming on Charles Street. And the whole thing about not having children in a two-bedroom apartment is a crazy presumption that you, I don't understand why people think that. I know people who live in one of the brand-new developments, they have two kids in a two-bedroom apartment, and that's going to increase a lot on the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make any comments or questions? Mr. Jeffers?
I'm not sure if I count as public or not. I'm Lincoln Jeffers, Economic and Community Development Director for the city. I've been watching this project, really since it's been first proposed. I was wondering why we had 11 acres vacant for all those years. Hannaford had it, and it just said, we can't develop it. They sat on it. Mr. Gendron came to the plate, and I was, I was pleased. I've been at most of these public meetings, and I think they listened and heard. The phase, the scale of development that could have occurred, based on the rezonings last year, they're not anywhere close to that cap. I know they had tried to avoid Charles Street. When I reviewed the wetland study, you could have paddled a pond across that vernal pool to get to East Avenue, plus you have all that congestion there. I also, I will admit, I'd heard part of the conversation that they would try to, they didn't guarantee, they said they would try to keep emergency access only on Charles Street. The reality was, I watched that meeting over, and it was not articulated, they made no commitments, they said, we will try to avoid Charles Street at all costs. I think they did. And unfortunately, Charles Street is where that one exit, but it's only for Phase 1. That's 64 units, when I did the math, that's about 25 cars a day at the peak hour. It's 24 in the morning, 27 in the PM, hitting Charles Street using that entrance. That's pretty, that's an hour. It's not like they're all hitting it at once. So there's, and the other phases, I can't speak to how the construction, whether it's going to come in off of East Avenue, you're going to have an entire site that can be built on. I'll let Mr. Gendron speak to that, or Mr. Gatto speak to that. But this building, this project could have had seven-story buildings. They dropped them to four stories. They could have done some really big buildings, they decided to do nine smaller buildings, smaller in scale. As far as open space, there's 52% of the site is going to be open. It's going to be green space. It's not going to be filled with buildings. So I think they really have done, listened to what kinds of the neighbor were, they've done their best. Change is hard. Anytime you have change, it's hard. Nobody likes to see it, nobody wants to see it. Next door, everybody recognizes we need more housing in this city. This is multifamily. It is a market rate, which we have not enough of. I think it'll be done very, very well. I think some people were admiring, wow, real balconies, as opposed to these things you tiptoe up to and look out and enjoy the air. Mr. Gendron and the family has done a wonderful job in all the projects around the city. They're committed to the city. They, as, the family is among our top 10 taxpayers, and I have every faith they will do as well on this project as they have on others. And I'm seeing, I'm coming down to my last three seconds as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffers. Anyone else wish to speak in favor or against this project? Okay, at this time, I will close it to the public and bring it back. Mr. Gatto, could you, I have a couple of, I took some notes from what some of the people asked, and I would like to pose those questions for you. One of them was, well, a couple of them discussed the berm and the fact of having water, you know, backing up onto their properties, and how tall is the berm, and of fencing on the berm? I don't see fencing in your, in your renderings, but, and I assume there won't be, but how tall is it? How wide is it? Just kind of, that kind of information.
Are you trying to pull up the berm image?
I'm trying to pull up the berm plan, but.
Shelley, can you help pick the right packet so that we can view that?
Oh, I've clicked it, maybe it'll open twice now, we'll see. It would be very helpful if I had the plan.
Yeah, Shelley, could you?
While we're waiting for that, I did look up the height of the light poles in the parking lot, and they're 14 feet tall.
Yeah, vary from nine to 14 feet.
Right. And the, the lighting is directed down, correct? It's so that it won't shine on, onto Charles Street in any way, shape or form? So that way, it.
Magic.
Magic fingers.
I think it was image like eight, maybe? Eight, nine, 10 in the PDF of the visuals that you had?
You wanted the grading plan?
Yeah, that's.
Ooh, your processor.
Okay, so I'm going from partly memory and partly being able to see it, but it's anywhere from four to six feet high, elevation 260 to 267. The parking lot on the backside.
So, so people parking facing Charles, the back of these houses that are on Charles Street, they will be, the lights will be mitigated by the berm? Or they should be, if it's six feet tall, or even four feet?
Yes.
If it's a four-feet berm and a big truck, less so.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but, yeah, pickup truck or something will, yeah, might, might have an issue, but most cars, there shouldn't be an issue, correct?
They should not be an issue. This is elevation 270. The parking lot is elevation 264. So there's six feet.
So there's six feet.
Top of the berm. So the idea was to have, the houses are up here, to have the berm go up and go down on the backside.
Right.
First of all, to limit water coming off the berm towards them.
Right. Okay.
And second of all, to give the visual impact. So the house lots are roughly elevation to, I'm seeing it now a little closer, 266 to 270, or 269. So, you know, that's three, four feet, you know, on the house side.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and what do you, how are you mitigating any water, as they've discussed? There's, there's water puddling now on that, on that property. How will the berm eliminate that? You know, I'm trying to, so that their water doesn't puddle, you know, go down onto their properties?
So this is the Adler property, and I have an underdrain system that's catching the water. It's, it's gonna, the water from the lots is going to flow towards the berm, and then we have an underdrain system on our side of the berm that is going to catch the water and run it out and over to Farwell Street. And from the Adler property towards East Avenue, there is a very flat swale that is natural there, and the water will go across driveway culvert into the wetland, because we can't alter the wetland by reducing the water.
Right, right.
So, so we are, you know, having a swale in the backyards over there so that that water is draining away. If it's not draining good today, it's not going to drain any better, but there isn't going to be any water coming from our site.
Onto, onto the properties on Charles.
You know, like the watershed is cut off, if you will, from our site.
Any question on that? Yes. I don't want to ruin your flow, but I'm just going to circle you back if I don't ask right now. So just so I'm clear, essentially, what you proposed is based on an assumption that all of the water drops that hit the berm on any angle are somehow going to get the water to your side of the berm?
On the top of the berm, it goes towards them on the other side, but it's a landscape berm. So the runoff off on a landscape berm is going to be minimal. It's not impervious where the runoff increases.
Right, so it's grass.
But there's more land and stuff flowing in that direction today, potentially.
And the second thing, because the berm, as you described, you named that a couple of properties are actually at 269 or 270, and that the height of the berm in its highest spot is also 270.
267.
So that's like three feet?
Three feet, three to four feet, on the house side. Okay. On the other side, it gets steeper. Because on our side, the car lights are going to be in the parking lot in much lower elevation, 264.
So that, the houses are above.
Houses are above. And they look out over three-foot berm. So they're, they're up looking at something that could be the top of the first floor or the second floor.
But if you're standing on the other side of the berm in the parking lot with your car lights on behind you.
If you're six feet tall, you're not going to see over the berm.
Right. Okay. Yeah, let's hear.
I mean, it varies, okay?
Well, yeah.
We have drainage that has to go, you know.
Okay. And there was a concern regarding, you know, Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, heavy equipment coming through Charles Street. I would assume that it's going to come through Farwell?
It's going to come through Farwell.
That new entrance that they paved over?
Constructed that new entrance, we're going to use that as the laydown, yeah.
Okay.
And the idea is to build that project and build out to Farwell.
Okay.
Is the idea.
Okay. All right.
Now, there will be traffic coming in or from East Avenue as well during construction, but it won't go into the project because we can't go across the vernal pool.
Across the vernal pool, yeah.
We'll be building that gravel filter bed, stormwater retention area over there on that side.
Okay. Does, I hope I've covered most of the questions that people had. Does anyone else on the board have any questions for the applicant? Yes, Ms. Cox? You're shaking your head.
Yeah. You touched on a bunch, which I really appreciate. I'm going to come back to the berm, though. What opportunity is there, if any? Because this image is not the best combo image, though it does nice with topography. I can't see the parking from the property and how close it comes to the foot of the berm. What opportunity, if any, is there to either widen or heighten the berm to address some of the concerns you've heard?
I wouldn't have room to. I wouldn't have room to, it's maintainable now at three to one slope. So we got to maintain that thing, too. It's likely going to be vegetated on the top area, which is five to six feet, maybe, which will be very, you know, landscaped at that top. But to make it higher is, is not, is not something that I could do. And without crowding into people's land or reducing the amount of, the width of the swale, there's a fairly wide swale behind the Doyon property. You know, we made that wide because it's flat, so that the water could flow over to our side and then run down into the well. So engineer has gone through all of this, the engineering has gone through all this. So I, you know, I really don't have room to add. The edge of the parking is probably 46 or 47 feet off the property line.
You can appreciate I asked questions, so...
Yeah, I do.
The recording and the public can hear things that are hidden deep in the depths of our...
It pulls it out of the brain, yeah?
Um, may I continue?
Yeah, please, yes.
I'm happy to stop and come back to if others have questions.
Oh, that's, that's fine.
So I'm, I am struggling with the Charles Street, the convergence of increased, increased parking and trips on Charles Street specifically through the construction. So I think we could revisit that for a second. And then I, one of the things that I'm really frustrated by, and Mr. Gange, it's not your fault. I don't know that it's anyone's fault, like, this is economic development and growth, and we're charged with trying to find a way to balance that, which the comprehensive plan says, that which allows the addition of taxable properties to our tax base so we can build outside box and have of all of the other amenities that I want for all of our residents, not, not just this neighborhood. But when I zoom out, and when I look at the traffic study, and when I look at the expectations that folks in this neighborhood have, some of which were really eloquently shared tonight, and I appreciate, the, the truth is, there is a larger design problem that is creating a day-to-day frustration for all of you, and that that is, in my opinion, what is ripping at the fabric of your neighborhood. And some of that is outside of Mr. Gendron's ability to control. So the more that we are pushing traffic from Exit 80 down Alfred Plourd through Webster Street, and I've taken it, my kids went to Farwell for three years. I am really familiar. I do go through that neighborhood, but I don't try to pass through it. And I'm just on the other side on Sabatus, so I, like, I get it. And that's because that neighborhood has, what is being proposed today in many ways from a design principle would only reinforce the neighborhood that, that you've described. 55 up, close-knit community, dog walking, there's two dog parks, folks are trying to be exercising the, a, a big disconnect that I think might be getting missed is that the peak traffic trips that you're hearing aren't the amount of times that cars are leaving throughout the day. It's the amount of time they're leaving when the majority of people driving through Lewiston are going to and from work. So it's really a very specific time. You probably get your groceries either really early or in the middle of the day. And so it, it's that that I think is a disconnect. The traffic being pushed through this neighborhood and the lack of additional pedestrian infrastructure isn't serving this project well, serving the residents well. And if we're going to be charged with trying to find a way to incorporate more housing, which we do desperately need, adding to our tax base, which we also desperately need, and doing it in a way that understands and respects the neighborhood that you have and that you want to maintain, and that which, frankly, you're banking on that neighborhood being one of the amenities, and so you're not trying to mess with that either. Some of that is the responsibility of our development and the way we're talking about things that we're putting out in '26 or '27, but I didn't hear sidewalks on Charles Street anywhere in any of those pieces. And so if we're going to be a community that supports development, smart development, market rate development, adding to the tax base development, what does it look like for us to meaningfully support that? And I hear, I hear our Director of Economic Development naming that this is a good thing. I couldn't agree more. But I also hear concerns that are relevant and are our responsibility to do with the balance of the tax dollars in which we say this is important to contribute to. So I don't know if there's any opportunity for any city staff to talk about what our commitments. I, I look at the Continental Mill as one concrete example, where a developer said, "I will do these things. I will add to the tax base. I will add to your housing. And give me an easement, and give me a river walk, because that's what makes my property work." And we are finding ways to make the appropriate pedestrian investments to contribute to exactly the development that that developer wants, that we know is a market interest and that would enhance our city as a whole. Why are we not looking at that here? And if we're about to put conditions of approval on this particular application, what commitments are we as a city making along with those and beside the taxpayer? And I don't know if there's anyone that can answer that question or take a dark stab at it.
Yes, Mr. Jeffrey?
Sorry, Link.
It's okay.
It's the right question.
No, it's a good question. It's a great question, as yours so often are. It's a, this is a $50 million project. It is going to generate, uh, over the course of the, we did the tax increment financing on this, it's going to generate about $460,000 annually when it's fully built out. The, excuse me, seven, and then 735 annually after, after the TIF expires.
Can I just pause you there? Well, at what point do we start receiving tax dollars from the project?
Uh, when it is...
Based on the years of...
Yeah, it's, it's a 22-year TIF, and it's, it's in year three is when we expect it to start kicking off revenues.
How much? I'll ask.
Which, bring...
I'm just looking at the, like, $30,000 price tag of the improvement that's waiting till 2026 and wondering how we're looking at...
Yeah, and as far as making sidewalk improvements, I think this project is going to...
I think it's making sidewalks. Go on.
Right. I, I think it's part of the general planning for the city. We, Charles Street's never had sidewalks. I think as we look at the capital improvement planning for the city's Public Works, we need more tax revenue to be able to do any of these things. So to tie it specifically to this project, saying, okay, this project, you know, there's a fair amount of TIF going back until the second phase is built. There's not that much revenue in the first few years. The TIF is structured where, at the end of five years, or when Phase Two comes in, whichever sooner, at that point, the amount that's coming back to the city improves, and, and it just continues to improve. And that was all sort of held static. It was solid mill rate. It didn't change the valuations or anything else. So I fully expect this project will kick off a fair amount of revenues. It will go into the general fund, and it's part of the capital improvement planning process for the city. If there's enough warranted demand, what I'm hearing tonight, there's a lot of kids living in this neighborhood. Charles Street, as bucolic and lovely as it is, has never had a sidewalk. And, and it sounds like they need it, and this is a sort...
If you were it now, you'd need sidewalks.
Okay. Sorry, please.
And let me just say it...
Please, you can't, no comments, please.
And I've heard both.
Yeah, okay.
I heard, I heard people saying, "We need sidewalks. We've got tax revenue. We could do that as part of the city's capital improvement planning." That's the appropriate time to do it. There'll be more tax revenue coming from this project.
Okay.
I'll try. Does that address your question, Shannon? So I wanted to...
I'd love to see it in a capital improvement plan when we're looking at that budget from Public Works.
Right. I appreciate the intent. Mr. Gatto?
I wanted to loop back to the phasing and the construction, and Dave has something to say.
Okay.
The idea is to do this road coming in here, in this loop of buildings in here. The second phase is to connect from Farwell up this parking lot, across to this parking lot, so that there is a loop. So the idea is that Phase Two would gain this loop, so that traffic would go in and out. My numbers, different from what Link mentioned, was 32 trips for 64 units in the first phase, and 81 trips, you know, full buildout. And that is, like I said, 49 coming in and 32 going out. And presumably, they will, in Phase Two, they'll have full access to this road, so that they can do it.
And Mike, you mean specifically peak hour trips?
Peak hour trips. Everything is peak hour, peak hour trips, which is confusing, and, you know, that's just the way the traffic goes, okay? The construction will be done from Farwell Street. All construction activity will come in from the Farwell Street entrance that we just paid. We'll do a laydown yard in the, in this thing, and we'll build this project from back forward.
Okay.
So, Dave wanted to say something, and he wants me to bring up the berm plan again. So, let's see if I can do that.
Mr. Gendron, would you identify yourself for the record, please, and speak into the microphone?
Yeah, David Gendron, 16 Ridge Road, Lewiston.
Don't close out anymore PDFs. Just keep them up. They don't have to reload.
Yeah, I gotta close this one.
Don't do it. You don't know when you need it.
Yeah, oh, there it goes again. Oh, here we go. Nope, I picked the wrong one. The rendering. The pictures? Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Rendering. I'm sorry, I went to the wrong place.
The berm images?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll get you there while you guys talk.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. There we go.
Oh, this is the one that we had, Charles, was it?
Six or seven, probably.
Oh, yeah, for some reason it's not. I'll get you there, but I just took an app, sorry.
Perfect.
Okay.
So as you can see, the berm is four to six feet higher than our parking lot. Then we have all this landscaping on top of the berm, the very top. As that grows, eventually, you're not even going to be able to see in there, because that landscaping is going to grow out.
Okay.
And you won't even see, you know, eye level, you won't be able to see in there.
Okay.
I mean, we spent a lot of time and effort to build that berm right and to landscape it right. We went back to the landscape architect several times to make sure, you know, he wanted to put a fence. I says, "A fence? No. It's not a natural look. We're going to put landscaping, which costs a lot more to do than a 10-cent fence." So the landscaping is going to really give a lot of buffering.
Okay.
And as far as the road, can you pull a road up on Charles Street, Mike?
We can try.
The driveway.
You want to see Charles Street?
I want to see the, the entrance going into Charles.
Well, let's go to the overall plan again.
Yeah.
I think we deleted it. Let's see if it opens up.
As you can see, that road that goes in is a long, quite a road. Believe me, if we didn't have to build it, we wouldn't, because it's very expensive to build that piece of road to get in there. And it doesn't give us any benefit other than getting out. So if we could have got around that road, we would have gotten around it and done something else, but we couldn't. And we'd have landscaped around that road, too, right, Mike?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. And as far as construction, the intent is to bring everything in from East Avenue. The only time we're going to... What's that?
Farwell Street.
Farwell Street, yeah, not East Avenue. The only time we're going to use Charles Street is when we're actually building that road. Other than that, all the construction activity should come in from Farwell Street.
Okay.
Will you block off Charles Street once that's done?
No.
What do you mean?
In other words, you're saying you, you're only using that to build the buildings?
Once Phase One is done, there'll be no reason, other than whoever's living in there, to use that. Construction-wise, we won't use it.
But you're not going to use it to build the buildings?
Uh, no, we're going to try to access everything from Farwell Street in.
Okay.
To stay out of that neighborhood with big trucks, that was their concern, lumber trucks, construction trucks, gravel trucks. You know, we're going to have to get in there when we pave it.
So you're going to block off Charles Street while this construction is going on?
We can block Charles Street off, yeah.
I would appreciate it if you would.
Yeah, I mean, that's not an issue. Other than when we are actually building the road, we have to get in on Charles Street to do it.
I realize that, but once the road is built, you're going to block it off, everything is going to come in from Farwell.
All the construction people will come in from, from Farwell. So if that's an issue, yes, we can block that off.
I would appreciate it.
Other than, other than during, when we're building that road.
Right, okay. Anyone else on the committee have any questions? Ms., Mr. Payne?
I do, but I, I think it's separate from what the audience was bringing up, and it's a little more in line with what Shannon was talking about. So I, I want to just make sure that no one else has any direct questions around berms and things like that, visual impact.
Okay, so Mike, Mr. Markott has a berm question?
Yeah, specifically to the berms. I, I like what I'm seeing in the presentation you're making. I happen to live across from a berm, and it does block, it's been 10, 15, 20 years, so it does block everything out. But what about perpetual maintenance? Will that be something that'll go along with this berm? Because one thing that I'm experiencing, and the, the Planning Director, Planning and Co-Director knows my concern there, is it's not very well-maintained, the vegetation has overgrowth and such.
Use your microphone, please.
Well, I thought it was picking up.
It's a request from the back.
Not enough.
Okay.
Not close enough.
So, so my concern is when something does get fully grown out and it accomplishes the effect of taking away the site into the other property, then there's overgrowth and it doesn't look well, and it hangs over, in my case, a street. But here, there wouldn't be a street, but it might encroach on the neighbors' properties and such. Will there be perpetual maintenance for the berm?
And we talked to the landscape architect about that, trying to get the right plant so it would be the least maintenance that anybody had to do.
Right.
And that's what we have focused, to try to get the right plants and trees so there's less maintenance. And I'm sure some of these folks might want to do whatever they want to do on our slope, so if they can look at what they want to do, you know?
Okay.
It will be maintained as part of the project maintenance annually. As you mow lawns and do stuff like that, you will be maintaining the berm and all the landscaping that we're showing on...
It's usually the ferns and the grasses and stuff, and coniferous nut trees aren't as impactful as the deciduous ones.
Mr. Payne?
So, you know, I think a lot of the conversations are centering around traffic on Farwell Street. And one thing, I was wondering, this is sort of a, a legacy question for staff, like, looking at how the street is laid out now, especially the northern end of it, it seems like there have been attempts in the past to limit travel down the street. So like, you know, what we're calling Farwell Street that goes into Sabatus is not actually Farwell Street, it's, it's a connector road. Right? So that was added in at some point. You know, I, I guess I just sort of wonder, again, to Shannon's point, you know, that this, um, a lot of the impact here and a lot of the problems that this project is sort of, you know, un, un, turning over the stone to, um, have to do with these larger... And, and, and I think, you know, it's a little tough for us as a planning board, because we don't design streets. That's not our, that's not our purview. We're supposed to really focus on projects. But it is hard to consider projects without considering sort of an overall scheme of things. So I guess, you know, just as someone who's newer to Lewiston, you know, did not live here when these streets were redesigned, I don't know if anyone sort of knows the history of why these changes were made. You know, I, I wonder about the connector road, just because it's connecting into Russell Street, which is a real major road, and that seems like something that can attract traffic, but...
Mr. Gange seems to want to address this, so please do.
Good evening. Kevin Gange, Public Works Director.
I've been here for about, in engineering, not a summer student, probably about 30 years. The connector road that you're talking about was part of a, a traffic plan, really to create traffic down Russell Street and get into Auburn. One of my first projects was actually to cut off the, the Farwell Street that went by Grant's Bakery. And, and I did that project. I think Mike Goddard was doing the grading plan. I was a young engineer. He said, "Kevin, you think you got the grades?" I think we figured it out all right. So, shutting off a street is easy to request. I, I think some of the traffic calming measures that we're trying to utilize, you know, a speed... You know, right now, we're using an elevated crosswalk on Farwell Street. That's about $15,000 to put in at our cost with our contractors. So before we went to close off or impact one way or some of these ideas that have come up, I think we do wanna look at, and we are looking at with different MDOT as well as our consultants, overall routing process. So, the counselor had mentioned to me earlier and during break, "Hey, can we, can we do some speed bumps on Charles Street or something?" So, you know, this project is dealing with the site issue. The rest of the traffic stuff really is back on us and planning and, and, and Public Works and the city to kind of look at that. I do know that, you know, over the past, we... Lisbon Street was four lanes. We did a different pattern out, outer Lisbon Road. It went to three lanes with a middle turn. That really slowed things down. That was like a four-lane drag race, right? So I think there's some good things that we've done. We were kind of late to the game on having middle-turning lanes. So trying to give some street diet, add middle medians, that's worked on Russell Street. That's worked on Cedar Street a little bit. So, we are trying to make those improvements. I think we, we were definitely open to ideas. We've heard some things tonight. Hope I answered your question. The legacy part of it, you know, it's, there was a, a big... We don't, we don't have a bypass in Lewiston. That was looked at by, I think, Chris Branch, previous, three previous directors ago. There's a lot of wetlands. We're more regulated now than ever. And to try to get that truck bypass around Lewiston, they put a lot of effort and it's, it's just not feasible, so... But localized truck traffic or vehicle traffic or cut-throughs are things that we're definitely focused on and working on.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Roy?
I have a follow-up question from Siganya. I didn't wanna get too far off the topic, but it does pertain. I was stationed in the UK for years and the major roundabouts were, were extremely useful. Is there no reason why we don't do roundabouts? At like, particularly East and, East and, and Sabates Street seems to me like it would be ideal for putting in a roundabout. It has enough space, a, a major roundabout, a two-lane roundabout.
And while you're throwing out there that lovely five-way intersection on Sabates just before that, too.
Well, I mean, right. I mean, personally, I think all the intersections from, from Main Street along Sabates Street should be roundabouts. I think that would, would... All the way out to outer, you know, to Sabates would be ideal. But is there a reason why we don't do that as far as either cost or is it just maybe it... I'm, I'm only thinking it looks, you know, more efficient than, you know, electric traffic signals, but...
So, our city engineer just joined us a little while ago, so he'll, he'll definitely take it in and Jeff can comment if I'm, I'm wrong here. But a lot of our projects are just trying to take care of existing infrastructure and, and paving. We're trying to get up to speed on ADA and sidewalks. I've heard sidewalks mentioned and not mentioned on the neighborhood street here. Those are ideas that should be coming out of our studies. So we've got some, a downtown corridor study, which is Main Street, Sabates Street, you know, coming through Lewiston from Auburn. Auburn is, our sister city, has put in some roundabouts around the mall areas and they seem to work well.
Yep.
So I think it would be something that we would look at. Right now, it's, it's capital work. I mean, just to keep up with paving right now, the cost that we're seeing, we're getting stuff pushed back timeline from DOT. They're participating anywhere from 90%, depending on what's going on. Some of our MPI's, we're getting more funds. So, we're having a hard time keeping up with the infrastructure we do have. But as these reports come out, we're gonna be going after federal money to try to do some other type of measures like you've mentioned.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? In that case, I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, if I can find it. Sure. I would like to make a motion that the application submitted by GRE LLC for gender and active living estates, a 208... Sorry. I did have one more comment. And I'm happy to make a motion after that.
Okay, certainly.
To not confuse things.
Okay.
We had a public comment that referenced the concern of people leaving the city and it's a concern I hold dearly, particularly because I'm raising for young men who now have the means to leave the city and I don't want them to. And one of the things that I've recognized through my day-to-day work, as, as well as the way in which I enjoy other communities in Maine, I always feel a little bit like a traitor when I go outside of Lewiston to take in a show. There are active senior living communities and facilities and estates in other places, but not in Lewiston. In fact, almost all of the housing reserved for seniors or 55 and up in our community is subsidized. It's not just affordable, which is actually a metric of what someone can afford, but it's actually subsidized housing. And the folks, when we're in a community that has a high aging population, the folks that we risk leaving are people who aren't putting strains on the schools and are moving to Brunswick or Scarborough to stay in some of these senior living estates and are taxpaying individuals. And it's because we're not giving them higher-end market rate, give me a dog park and green space facilities. We're giving them Blake Street Towers. And we need both. I'm a firm believer that we need both. We need affordable housing, we need subsidized housing, we need market rate housing, we need luxury housing. This, this presents an opportunity, if thoughtfully mitigated with a lot of very real concerns. This is part of how we get there, part of how we put in roundabouts someday. And so it just, it felt like a really important contribution.
Sure, no problem.
Shall I make a motion?
Yes, please. Please do.
I'd like to make a motion that the application submitted by GRE LLC for gender and active living estates, a 208-unit multifamily development with a total building footprint of 73,163 square feet at 128 Farwell Street and 255 East Avenue, meets all of the necessary standards contained in the Zoning and Land Use Code, including but not limited to Article 13, Section 4 approval criteria and Section 5 coordination with state subdivision law, and that approval be granted with the following conditions. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the city shall receive approval for delegated review authority for site location of development act from MDEP. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall record a post-construction stormwater management performance guarantee with a registry of deeds and provide the city with a copy for their records. This guarantee shall include annual stormwater management facility certifications. That prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit for the first building of Phase One and the first building of Phase Two, that an easement to the city of Lewiston will be provided for access to the water shut-off valves for all buildings in Phase One or all in Phase Two, respectively. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant's engineer shall certify that all improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plans, including but not limited to stormwater and utilities, pavements, plantings, and exterior building materials.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion from, of members of the board? In that case, I'll call the role. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Mark Roy? Michael Markott?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Abstain.
Okay, and Lucy Bissin, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, may I make a comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm really looking forward to our capital improvement plan period, which will come up. And I really would like to see all of you residents come back and advocate for increased spending for some of those residential things because it's just the seven of us making that case every year and we could use the support.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, thank you all for coming and we really appreciate your coming. Okay, other business. Report from staff on recent de minimis changes and there are none.
Lucy?
Yes, please.
Can we get, who seconded the motion?
Michael Markott, seconded.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. And we've got Alex, who abstained?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, would you like to dis...
Sure.
To share with us?
I think, uh... My big concern with projects like this, and I was sort of chatting with Amy about this during our recess, is that they can often, you know, it sort of becomes like warehousing for people a little bit. The density and the way they get developed like this...
Thank you, John.
Can sort of lead, I think, to these situations where we're, we're condensing people in a space and it, and, you know, listening to the residents talk about what makes this neighborhood really good for them. I don't think the built form, which I completely understand why we have the built form in this project, is going to help continue that, that legacy. I have concerns about that. But, all of that aside, you know, there's a lot of systemic stuff in that, that like, the developer cannot change. The city can't change. Like, it's, it's, it's a national trend on how we build our cities. It's really hard to break through from that. Why I really abstained is I, I wanted to hear a little bit more about trying to get access out of the backend of the property. And I understand the challenges there, but I think really the, the answer from, well, we, we talked to Lewiston Housing, you know, they, they wanted to do Section 8. We were talking about partnering on the project. That wasn't really what I was asking. I was asking, could they trade, you know, what appears to be under 20 spaces for a driveway and give those spaces to the housing authority? Get a, what would end up being a third access point that would get people directly onto Sabates Street. It would be better for the residents. It would add to connectivity in the community. I bet you would even benefit some of the people on Charles Street. They would be able to get out of their neighborhood easier. Yeah, I, I, again, I think it's really challenging, given how the site's set up, given that a lot of the, sort of the frontage that would make this a lot easier has already been developed. But, yeah, the, the answer is sort of, well, we tried to buy some houses that no one wanted to sell. That's completely fair. But I think maybe the conversation with the housing authority was around partnering on the actual project rather than just partnering on access. And that's, that's what I really wanted to see. But I, I don't think that's ultimately a deal breaker and that's why I abstained. I, I, you know, in a perfect...
You didn't wanna vote against it, but...
Yeah, I, I don't...
You just wanted to make your, your comments known.
Yeah, I think it's very, I wanted to make it clear that, yeah, I think there, I feel like there is a third path here and I know people are working very hard on this.
Right.
And I, you know, and I hear that in what they're trying to build. But again, the development forms that we are pressured into doing based on sort of national policy around roads, national, state policy around roads and, and development overall and how the market is perceived to work, not how it actually works, how it's perceived to work, I think drives developments like this that ultimately aren't going to give 100% the result that would be good in this situation.
Yeah, and, and the problem arises when we, Mr. Gangi discussed the bypass. I mean, 50 years ago, and I remember this, that just tells you how old I am. It, you know, the environmental rules were not there or were very lax. And it was, it should've gone through Garcelan Bog. And it was never built because our city fathers at that time didn't, didn't wanna spend the money and that kind of thing. And so then the, the properties around Garcelan Bog got built up. And so there's no room to put the bypass and that's why people use Farwell as a bypass.
I will say, one of the reasons I moved here is because we don't have any...
Any bypass?
Yeah, actually.
And I'm, I'm not saying it would've been a good thing to do.
I wanted to say that for the people out there in TV land.
Right, right.
Here's someone who has moved to Lewiston from another place, probably could've moved to other places. I chose Lewiston.
That's good.
And part of the reason is how we've built up and how we've developed and how we've tried to put as much care as we can into how we're doing that.
We do.
So, it works, folks.
It does, it does. Yes, Michael?
There was also another reason. It was because of Army Corps engineers by the time that they were gonna put it through.
Yeah.
Were barking because it was a bog.
Yeah, because it's, you know, back then, then the, the environmental stuff started coming in and...
And since I lived in the area, Paradise Park was down near 12 Lexington where I worked for 20 years before we moved. I, I remember thinking that I, I, I don't wanna bypass right through the middle of Lewiston like marginal way. I, I didn't want people to just come off the highway to go to Auburn, Turner, and points north. It would've destroyed our neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Today, sometimes you get a yearning that, you know, there would've been benefits that we didn't receive. But there are negatives. And the negative is, because I do it and I use Farwell, I don't go down to East Avenue and take a right. It's much more convenient to take Farwell and do the connector over to Russell.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how you resolve that. First time I heard the idea of doing roundabouts in Lewiston, that may be something to look into.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think roundabouts are interesting. Okay, so, um, last item is the motion to adopt the August 26th and September 9th draft minutes. Do we wanna do them separately or together? Mike?
Sorry to bring us back on the agenda here for other business.
Okay.
We talked a lot about roads tonight and active transportation and other forms of transportation. Is there a chance that we could do a joint meeting at some point in the year, once, with the Complete Streets Committee? Just to talk about what they're up to? I mean, we, we had this great briefing with the previous Public Works Director, talking about capital improvement around roads. And I think, you know, since transportation and land use are hand-in-hand, you don't really have one without the other. I feel like that would be worthwhile, you know?
Yeah, I think that might be a good idea. Is it something we could do?
I think if the board were to give a little bit of guidance as to what they were looking for, we could definitely take that back to our Director of Public Works so that he can have something to work on rather than just shooting blindly.
Oh, of course. I think, uh, don't wanna speak for the whole board, but I would love to hear an update on all of our sort of major road infrastructure upgrade and change projects that we're doing. You know, what's in, what's on the books, what are we working on? I think being able to give our feedback of, hey, you know, we were working on this project and traffic issues came up. Or, we were working on this project and pedestrian issues came up in these ways. And being able to sort of talk about what, what could be in store for those requests, I think would be really interesting. And I think using that time to talk about the overlap of how we're thinking about where we wanna see development and what type of development we wanna see places, along with what's being proposed for our, you know, two-year, five-year, 10-year plans for transportation.
Okay, sure.
That's a fun time.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be a little bit more specific because as somebody who has to deal with committees in my day job, that's just a really good time and not really clear.
Yeah.
We have made really clear commercial development priorities based on rezoning and you've got those priorities from the last year. I'd love to know how our work and what the city council has directed us as priorities and that we're implementing is or is not the priorities of the Complete Streets. So if we're saying these commercial corridors, these three commercial corridors are where we're doubling down on rezoning, where we wanna see improvements, where we wanna see development happen, and we are. I think our last four projects that we've seen have come directly from that process. So like, good job us, it's working. What is Complete Streets focusing on? Have they been given that guidance? What, so I mean, I think the short version is, given the targeted development goals that the city council and planning board have articulated, how do they line up with the Complete Streets priorities concretely? And I'm gonna add to that, one of the other priorities that we've focused on is the Riverwalk, the Riverfront Island Master Plan and the way in which those are interconnected to the development that we're hoping to drive in that area. What priorities or projects is Complete Streets working on in that? So for me, it's not just like, what are you up to? But here's what we're up to because city council told us to, because it's a priority for our residents. And what are your priorities and how do they line up with the areas that we're focused on, like very specifically? And are there areas that they are focused on that might inform our conversations on the flip side? But I mean, I think there's something really concrete to start from.
Okay.
Rest of it sounds like a great time.
All right, well, that's, it's a, it's a start. It's a place to go, it's a start from. Okay, so, then we'll go back to the reading of the minutes. Motion to adopt the August 26th and September 9th draft minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, so we have Alex and who seconded?
Roger.
Roger? Lucy Bissin? Yes. Motion to adjourn.[1673.71]